I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Punks are running wild in the street and there's nobody anywhere seems to know what to do and there's no end to it. The air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat. We sit watching our TVs while some local news caster tells us that today we had fifteen homicides and sixty-three violent crimes, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. It's like everything everywhere is going crazy, so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is please at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my toaster and my TV and my steel belted radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone. Well, I'm not gonna leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is that first you've got to get mad. You've got to say, I'm a human being and my life has value. So, I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your chairs. I want you to get up right now and go to the window, open it and stick your head out and yell, I'm as mad as hell and I'm not gonna take this anymore.
Well, hello there ladies and gentlemen and welcome to another special and amazing edition and episode and all of that of the political spotlight. I am your host, Christopher H. Bilbury and boy is uh is this show gonna be amazing. We have a lot of things going on. It's going crazy. If you can please, please, please do all of the things that you're supposed to do if you truly love us and if you don't, then to hell with you. Hey, we are on rumble for the second night in a row. Uh, I thought last night when we got off the show that it was gonna be bad. It was gonna be wrong. I wasn't gonna do it because I thought we ran into all kinds of chaos, but we smoothed it out. I got it figured out. Kate helped me and uh, we are now officially on rumble from the here on out. We will be on rumble. So if you watch us on rumble, you know what to do. Alright, here's what we're gonna do. Uh, we're gonna do things a little bit differently than we generally do because uh, we're gonna be bringing on uh, the 10th councilman to give us some insight. We're gonna get a little bit of a drive-by Audi. Audi's not gonna be on for the entire evening. He's just gonna be on for a little bit of time up here at front uh, because he's in the big time now. He's, he's not just a man out there shoveling shit with a shovel. He's now uh, yelling at the people shoveling the shit with the shovel. So uh, he's uh, the big, big man in charge and so he can't come out here and play with uh, us anymore. He's one of the cool kids. So uh, alright ladies and gentlemen, uh, here we go. Without further ado, uh, the 10th councilman.
Good evening, everybody.
Actually tonight you would have been like the sixth councilman because I think there were four or five that weren't there functioning or whatever's going. I don't know what was happening.
First of all, I wanna say thanks to our councilman in District Three, Brandon Garrett for not showing up again.
Hey, he's on a cruise. What can you do? When you, when you are able to take six or seven cruises a year, what can you do?
Council's paying him too much money, I guess.
Apparently that's true. Holy hell. Hey, look, I see that you're wearing a shirt. Uh, you got a shirt that's kinda cool.
Yes, I do.
I've got mine here.
Let me get my wanker out, my finger out of the way.
Support AFSMI Local thirty-six fifty-six. That's really cool. I'm gonna hang that up in back. This is cool. These are really well done. They're really heavy shirts and uh, it, it looks like all kinda like it was spray painted and it was like kinda gorilla shirt done, but it's not. It's like really nice, like stenciled on. It looks like that. This is, this is really nice. Uh, and so I, I don't know exactly who put these together. Uh, I know that um, Daisy Dale had them as the one that contacted me about it, but I don't know exactly who put these together. So uh, when I find that out, I will give it the correct and proper shout out. It might be Daisy and if so, thank you. That's wonderful. Uh, I'm sure all of the people, we, we see we got one of the uh, AFSMI people here in the comments. Uh, John Wargo, uh, he is uh, an AFSMI employee and so um, you know, I know that he appreciates it. He was there tonight. Uh, he and I about got struck by lightning together uh, when something crazy happened, but we'll talk about that here in a bit. Um, but yeah, there's that. So we'll put that up in the back. We'll hang that up so you guys can always see it. But um, okay, so uh, before you gotta get to bed because you got a bedtime now, uh, what do you wanna do? You wanna just run through what you thought, your thoughts or what were you telling me what you wanna do? You're in control.
We can run through a bunch of it. Uh, you know, that was kinda, you know, not that important, but you get down in a little ways and they start talking about the bot again.
Yeah.
They said, well, this is the next step. We gotta go, but yet they released about nine million dollars tonight. They said they'd talk, the council said that when it was time to release the money for the bot, they would come in and get the appropriations needed and all that stuff. And so they did that and they just pushed it through as a resolution. So they're gonna start building a fire station this week. So.
Yeah, this, this week, he, he's saying that uh, it's gonna be ready by as, as uh, I think he said they'd start, they'd start, they'd start on it by the end of this month it'll be started on and I look for them to, to be racking up the, the money uh, tomorrow probably.
Yep. And the thing about it is nothing was discussed about the uh, rehab center. It was supposed to be in, opened in October last year.
Yeah, right.
It's still sitting down there. There's not much going on. They got some asphalt in. They got some landscaping done. So.
We got a driveway.
Driveway now, so.
They announced that.
There's a bottle of uh, window cleaner sitting in the middle of the floor. It's been there for a month.
That's what we need to do is we just need to continue looking at how long that bottle of cleaner just sits there.
It's sitting there right. You look in the window right off H Street and you see a bottle of Windex or cleaner or something sitting in there. So they haven't done much. Like I said, once again, not much is getting done down there. Um, like I said, Mr. Garrett didn't show up again tonight. Um, he's missed three meetings. One, I think he was on Zoom, but he's missed all the meetings about the bot information and all that. So.
Missed all of the finance committee meetings.
Missed all the finance committee meetings. Uh.
Let's, let's say it this way.
Let's say, I'm gonna go out on a limb. Garrett, if you can't make every minute meeting, resign.
Well, yeah, he's missed the most important meetings.
Yes.
He's missed the most important meetings. All of the meetings, all of the meetings um, with, that's dealt with the bot, all of the finance committee meetings. Uh, it's, it's been, it's been pretty crazy. Now, I will tell you, yeah, I, a little uh, a little fairy told, maybe I shouldn't say that. Audi told me, no. Uh, a little birdie told me, I guess that's probably more appropriate. A little birdie told me, and it wasn't Audi, that he was on a cruise and uh, congratulations. But I hope it's not down there where all of the hurricaneing is happening.
Like I said, the second one this year.
Yeah, it's like second or third cruise. I wanna know how that's happening.
Kudos to him.
I haven't, I haven't been on any cruises this year. So um, that's who we know if Lisa's shown up to any meetings in Winchester. I need to check up on that. I, I do not know. Um, we did learn tonight that there is uh, another finance committee meeting coming. Um, I knew nothing about that. Did you know about that?
Oh, I didn't even know about the special meeting. So.
Well, yeah, I knew about the special meeting. So there is a special meeting scheduled and it's when they're gonna vote on the actual um, budget. So Wednesday, October twenty-third, and that is the correct date. I polled a city of Muncie tonight and I, I absolutely hate it. I can fix it in the thumbnail and I will fix it in the thumbnail, but I will not be able to. You know what I'll do? I'll just cut it out of the other show because I can't stand for things like that to be wrong. Uh, on the other show, none of you told me and none of you called me out for it. You see at the bottom of the screen how it says Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. In tonight's meeting, I, I had it say Monday, October tenth, and I don't know, I don't know why I did that, but it's not October tenth because if it was October tenth, that would be Audi's birthday.
Right.
Ten-ten.
And everybody knows what ten-ten means on the police code. It means a fight. So.
Yeah, that's, that's about appropriate.
About appropriate, so.
So there is a special meeting and here is the, here is the um, the agenda for that special meeting so far. Oh, well GW mentioned it right away.
I gotta get my refreshments.
Yeah, right. We'll talk about that too. Uh, yeah, yeah.
They're gonna allow people to drink.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be Saddam and Gamora. They're gonna be drinking and it's gonna be dogs and cats and, and man.
I mean, you're gonna open up drinking on public streets, okay? You're gonna have more issues. The police department's overwhelmed now according to Deegan. They don't have enough staffing, but yet they're gonna open up this police or open up this alcoholic beverages to go from one place to another and uh, they don't need no more police officers for that. So you know, kudos. So next time he comes up and says we need more police officers, according to you, you answered the question to uh, uh, Mr. Mack tonight, Billy Mack, that uh, you don't need no more police officers.
Yeah, that was a really weird statement. I've never heard them say that before.
You have tonight.
Yeah, that's uh.
And that kind of bears mouth.
I wonder how long we can hold them to that. I mean, is that gonna, because normally they're like, we need more, we need more, we need more, we need more.
Yep.
Uh.
Brought to my attention.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's been brought to your attention, but there's still a, a law on the books, on the city ordinances, that the city police have to live in the city limits. And then they're gonna come back and say, well, uh, state law says they can live anywhere as long as they have adequate transportation to and from. But yet didn't we do that quite differently tonight with the uh, speed limit signs and stuff and the uh, and the uh, walking around the streets in public with.
I don't know what you're talking about. Since, since the mid nineties, Muncie City Police Officers have been able to live within the city limits uh, or live within any doughnut county that touches Delaware County as long as they have a working phone.
Did they change that ordinance?
That's since the mid nineties it's been that way.
Well, I hadn't looked it up yet, but.
Yeah. No, and I, I get it. I mean, someone told you, someone tells you that, but yeah, that's been, that's been pretty standard and I, and it used to be on their application that said that you needed to live within the city limits or you needed to live in, you know, uh, Madison County or Henry County or Randolph County or J County, you know, one of the surrounding doughnut counties to Delaware County, but I think they've even taken that off now.
I don't care where they live.
I mean, yeah, I don't mind, but I, I get, I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. So um, basically, in, in running down just through, through the meeting, the first of all, okay, so it was a really haphazard meeting and it ran pretty smoothly for the first, for the first majority part, but man, towards the end, dude, it got insane. Uh, the Zoom, the Zoom feed got dropped and then Nora kept getting dropped and, and Dan Gibson kept getting dropped. So we have a, we have a nine-person city council, online city council members, you know, are supposed to be there. Brandon's on a cruise, so he's MIA. Uh, Nora was not present uh, in body tonight, but she was there via Zoom, which is illegal. Um, and then our count, our city council attorney, Dan Gibson, was also not there, but he was there via Zoom, which is perfectly fine. Um, but then, then it kept dropping and it caused all sorts of chaos there for a minute and I could tell Nora was getting pissed off, which was hilarious, but uh, it was complete insanity uh, when all that started happening. And then you, you get them where they forget if they've asked, if they've called for the motion or, or they keep repeating themselves and it just, it is a very like second grade production when they start doing that. And I just.
Not very professional.
I just, I do, I, I just hate that they do things like that.
Well.
Stumblefoot says the most awkward meeting I've ever watched. Yes, it was very awkward.
The thing about it is when um.
Oh, GW said Mason said under his breath that Nora should be there. Wah wah.
Back when Jeff ran, I did, ran pretty smoothly.
Yeah, I mean, I tell you, for all the, for all the crap people wanna say about Jeff, he, he ran a pretty smooth meeting. I mean, we never, we never would have seen any of that weirdness happening. Look, and I get it. Look, I get that people, I get that people have things that come up and whatnot. You know, for all the weirdness with Jerry Dishman, you know, in the like thirty-nine years he's been there, he's never missed a council meeting, ever. He has never missed a council meeting and you know, for all the weirdness, I gotta give him credit. When you're, I always say things are going to happen. You know, you can't, you can't uh, you can't stop if God forbid someone passes away in your family or, or whatever. Planning a trip is a little bit different, you know, and, and I understand that and it should be pretty easy to plan around that and most people do, but I get that you might have something happen and you know, something might pop up and you might miss a meeting here or there. And, and if you do, you know, appear via phone, appear via Zoom and, and you know, at the end of the day, if you can't appear, that's okay, but when you're missing meeting after meeting after meeting, it's not a good look.
No, it's not. It's not.
It's not a good look.
And.
Hello there Tara B.
And another thing that wasn't brought up tonight was the uh, Ask Me Until public comment. Uh, I made a statement, you know, if, if the fire department was working without a uh, contract, if the police department was working without a contract, the council would be the first one to stand up and say, hey, we're not doing this shit no more. Let's get them a contract before you spend any more money. Tell the mayor that.
Yeah, absolutely.
The Ask Me employees, the department, all them people should not be treated any different.
Well, that's exactly right. And, and, and the thing that I don't like is when you say that, you always get all these like sideways looks and smirks from the council and they're like rolling their eyes and people in the back of the room is like snickering and stuff and saying, that's not right, duh, duh, duh. But at the end of the day, listen, here's, here's the thing. Here's the thing. Um, there, there will, there will absolutely be um, there, there, hold on one second. I'm getting a text. There will be absolutely um, there, there's, there's no one that can say that the AFSMI employees are not treated differently. They absolutely are. And if you say that, you either don't know, you're just oblivious to it, or you're lying. One of those things.
Or all the above.
Um.
Or all the above.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or all, all of the above, all of the, the above. And at the end of the day, there're gonna be people who are gonna say, well, the council's not in charge of the contracts. The council can't do this. The council can't do that. But that's not what you're saying. And, and look, I, I get that there might be a little bit better way of saying it, but it's, it's getting down to the brass tacks. The council has the ability to say, no, we are not pushing through any more of the mayor's wants until the mayor starts to sit down and negotiate. You can use the, the power of the office as a way to checks and balance against, you know, things that the mayor is either doing or not doing.
Correct. Well, like I said, this Republican-controlled council that gives this mayor everything he wants, everything he wants. Republican-controlled by the Democrats. And it's time these Democrats stand up and, and show that they support union people. It's time. Shut him off until you get this contract done.
It's not hard. Yeah. Audi, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a step here real quick. So Audi's started this new job and he's, Audi's a little uh, Audi's wound tightly.
Very tight, very tight.
And um, so what happened tonight was people were thinking it was funny what he said like on his side and, cause I was laughing too. And then all of a sudden he turns around and says, is there a problem? Uh, so and I get it because normally what happens is you get people being assholes and doing that. And so tonight, I think he kinda snapped at people who were on his side, but it happens. I, I smoothed it over.
If they were on my side, I apologize.
Yeah, it's, it, it's not. I mean, it, look, because, because it's hard because you do get people up there who, when you're up there saying stuff that, you know, there are people who do that, snickering and carrying on. And I've done that same thing before where I've turned around and been like, what, you know, what's funny? Uh, I, I yelled bash him a couple of times. He and I had some back and forth, a couple of things. I, I saw him twice tonight do this. And lean over and start to talk. No, 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 no. You, you, you can't do that. You, you can't do that. Tara, Tara B, I, I text you, Tara. I text you.
And oh, you're right. I am sorry. I won't do that again.
What?
Did say he was sorry that he wouldn't do it again.
Did he say that?
He said, yeah, yeah, you're right. This is a public meeting. I can't do that. He sure did.
Well, okay, so that's the first thing I wanna, before, see, cause I wanted to go straight into you and I didn't wanna take, I didn't want to, I didn't wanna spend any time on this, but I've gotta tell you, ladies and gentlemen, I know it is not.
October seventh.
Uh, yeah, it, it is not, yeah, it's not the same thing as an email or whatever, but I have to say tonight at two hundred and eighty days, I think that we're going to kill the streak now because Basham and I did have correspondence that was more than just him shaking his head yes or whatever. In my opinion, I will, in my opinion, I will chalk that up to uh, the communication I've been looking for. So uh, I'm happy that he did that. We'll talk about that here in a minute, but uh, the, and I'll show you this again, but this is the uh, yeah, this is the uh, this is the end of the line. Two hundred and eighty days, two hundred and eighty days. He has finally decided to communicate and uh, you know, it was, I was happy that he did, but um.
He'll start tomorrow. Gotta start number one again tomorrow.
What? Yeah, right. We'll, we'll start back with one tomorrow. Absolutely.
You see these signs on these counties that say three hundred and sixty-five days without an injury.
Yeah, right. Yes, right. Pull it down in the back. Absolutely. Have it hanging up right there. Yeah.
Which one calendars back there says day one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, so yeah, I, I, that's, that was quite crazy to me because uh, he, he actually uh, he, he really did uh, like, I thought he was being a smart ass. And then he did exactly, I thought he was being a smart ass and doing what he was like, oh, that's all right. That's a good idea, Mr. Bilbury. And then I thought he was gonna vote, but he actually voted no on it. So I was like, holy crap. And what's funny is everybody in the audience like knew it was like a monumental occasion.
Yep.
That was a wild deal. So.
He did say, yeah, Billbury, you was right. If I could.
Yeah.
You're right. It's a public meeting.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy about that too. That's, so that's, I didn't even hear that. That's, that's a twofer.
Two for Tuesday.
Yeah, right. That's, that's amazing. So um.
I don't know if there's anything else that, like I said, the uh, police department got their money. Uh, fire department got their money. They're getting a fire station built for nine million dollars.
Or more.
Or. Um, they did.
Getting gray over there. Turn your head. No way. Yeah, you are.
Dude, I'll be fifty-four years old on Thursday.
Fifty-four years old.
That's old bastard.
Yeah, hey, that is.
You're pretty gray there. You're a little forty-eight older.
Right, right. Forty-eight years old. Good lord.
How old are you?
I don't know. Uh, somewhere between, I, I always say somewhere between thirty-eight and forty-eight. So it is what it is. Just, you, you decide. Um, it's a, it's a play. It's a, it's a choose your own adventure. Um.
And I mean, I didn't get up to the podium much tonight. I did get up and say, you know, stop the mayor's bullshit and basically make him get the contract.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a couple of questions I would really wish they would read more into the ordinances, let people know exactly what properties they're talking about. Northwest Corner of Dethel and, and um, um, Morrison is a big old open cornfield, bean field, whatever. So there goes some more farmland, five more acres of farmland that they're gonna put a gas station or something into um, across the street from the uh, doctor's offices, across the street from uh, um, the old Tucson Tools. So more of it going in that direction. Uh, wish they would start back out toward the east, uh, bringing something in out there. Uh.
Charlene's.
That's, there you go. The uh, the place on uh, that was annexed years ago, the old uh, soccer fields and stuff like that. That's still sitting there empty. Nothing's going.
Yeah.
It's been done there. There's not been that much done at Southway Plaza. Wait a minute. There's nothing been done with the YMCA downtown. Wait a minute. Oh, shit. There ain't been nothing done at all.
Yeah, right, right. Well, and, and did you hear? Did, it's gonna be a Dollar General. GW says that's absolutely true. Um, and did you hear that the YMCA North is being sold to Ball State University?
I didn't hear that. No.
Yeah, that's, that's happening. That's really weird. I thought they were gonna keep it open or did they, was, was the plan that they were gonna close both of them?
They're gonna close them both. They were gonna keep them both open until they got the new one opened and then they was gonna close them both.
Okay, okay. Well, Ball State is buying the YMCA North and they're gonna use that for their pool. A pool.
So they're gonna have.
Tennis courts for Ball State. What?
They're gonna have to swim pool in there.
Is there not a pool?
Not at the north. They got one downtown.
Oh, I thought they said it was gonna be a pool.
No, ninety percent of it's tennis courts.
Yeah, that's true.
But they'll have tennis, volleyball, swimming.
There's a track in there.
Air upside up. No, that upstairs tracks in the downtown one. Yeah, there's a track in there. It's a nice building. I mean.
Yeah.
Old barn building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Said, you know, they, he keeps, the only thing we're doing is raising our taxes. Raising our. Um, they pretty much tabled those tonight until after the budget meetings and all that stuff because they're gonna raise your taxes, folks. They're gonna raise your uh, sewage bill. I'm specifically asked a couple of months ago or last month when the sanitary sanitation, one of the districts come up, MSD come up and was talking about, you know, their budget and stuff. And I asked if there was gonna be a raise and she says, not as this time, but I seen it on the agenda tonight. So.
Yeah. Yeah. That's interesting. I guess we'll just have to start monitoring that through the sanitary district. Uh, I don't watch them unless like I need to, unless something comes up that I need to. So.
Go up.
What?
The rates are gonna go up in city of Muncie.
Yeah.
The mayor's spending too much money, not got enough in his budget, so he's gonna raise the rates on everything that he can. Property taxes are gonna go up. Your assessed value has already went up on your property. So that raises your property taxes through the county and that means the city gets more money to spend on projects that don't get finished.
Yeah, well.
Okay, Chris, I'm gonna get off here. I gotta.
Alright, yeah, bro. Take care. Have a good night. Have a, have a good day. All right. Yeah, bro. Take care. Have a good night. Have, uh, have a good day. Get ahold of me tomorrow. I'll get ahold of you.
And when you call me now again.
Yeah.
Is when I see it on.
Right, right. That's hilarious. All right. I'll get ahold of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that was Mr. Audi Barber, the Del, uh, Muncie City, Delaware County, Indiana World. The, the, uh, intergalactic councilman, 10th councilman, Audi Barber. Uh, going off to get a little shut eye before, uh, his, uh, big day starts, you know, here in just, uh, here in just a couple of hours. So there goes our cheeseburgers. What? What cheeseburger is that? All right, is that a?
Comment earlier that asked me can't even get a cheeseburger out of damn.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's, I, I thought that was like a, a pet name that you called Audi. Ah, God. Okay. Well, so he wanted to pop on. I, I already made the, uh, made the thumbnail and put him in the show last night. Before even talking to him and I didn't, I forgot what he had going on tomorrow and I forgot that today was a, a long day for him. So he wanted to come on to give his piece. We will now go through kind of a, a little bit more, uh, of a show with kind of a review of the council meeting. Uh, I do want to say before we get there, and it is important to say. Uh, obviously today is the 7th of October. Uh, it is the 7th, not the 10th. I will fix that. Once we're off the show, I'll fix that in the other video. Good looking out there GW. Uh, but today is Monday, the 7th of October, 2024. It is 280 days, 280 days and on this 280th day, Dale Basham did decide to engage with me. Uh, he was, um, a, a couple of different people said they thought he was genuine. I have a hard time because his very sincere, caring and genuine face looked very much like his extremely non-genuine face. So it's very hard to tell with, with, uh, Dale. Um, but I'm going to choose to be uh, the bigger man and assume that he was being nice and polite and we're gonna, we're gonna now kill it. And we'll just see where we go from this point forward. Hopefully we can start some kind of a dialogue. I even found that he, uh, I guess you guys, Audi and a couple of you are saying that he even uh, agreed with me when I called him out about the microphone ordeal and I didn't even hear him do that. So, um, you know, uh, I do appreciate that. I, I do give him praise for, for, uh, you know, doing what he did tonight and, and when I said what he said, when I said what I said, which we'll play it here in a moment and let you guys hear it. I kind of thought that I would go sit down and he would vote and he would go ahead and vote yes. And it would die or maybe hopefully it would die on lack of, of, uh, of a full vote. So he, you know, might be one to two and everybody else would vote no. But he voted no. It was a really weird vote because there were only eight people voting and basically it split four way. It split four ways. And so, hey, thank you, Jack. Uh, it went four ways, uh, or excuse me, it went two ways. It went four to four. Uh, and so that was a nothing. So then they then made the vote and he was one of those no votes and I was like shocked. And what was interesting was Ro, and this is one vote I disagree with. She actually voted yes. And I think she found herself shocked when Basham voted, uh, no. You could actually see in her face that she was like, what? I think she would have voted no if she knew that Basham was gonna vote no. So that was very, very, very crazy to me. So. 280 days. That is now done. And honestly, I'm happy. I'm happy it's done because making that, uh, overlay is a pain in the ass. So I am extremely happy that it's over. Also, it is a weird point in the show to say, but we are 29 days, cause these things normally go together. We are 29 days out from the election day, Tuesday, November 5th. Uh, we are, uh, quickly, uh, coming, uh, into focus here, man. We're gonna, we're gonna be, it's gonna be here before you know it, which I don't know if it's scarier to say that election day is gonna be here in 29 days or that it's gonna be November in, you know, just 20 some days. To me, it's almost worse that it's gonna be November. I, I don't, I don't really know. Um, I don't know. I used to say, used to think that I could live someplace like North Carolina or South Carolina or someplace like that, but that's, uh, quickly been, uh, checked off my list. I think I have no other choice than being an expat and moving to London. Because London, I can deal with rain, man. I just hate the cold that I know we're getting ready to be in for. Oh my God. Uh, so 29 days and as. Yeah, right. No, and I, I, whatever's happened here in the last couple of days. It's, uh, definitely check that off of my places to live box. I can promise you that. Uh, with 29 days being, uh, left there, uh, I also do have to say that we have zero days left to register to vote. It's over. It's over in two hours, folks. It's over in, in two hours. And, uh, basically that means that, um, it's all, it's all over. I mean, you can, you can get registered. You can, you still have time. Uh, the, the person that I was going to have come on and do it, we, we didn't want something stupid to happen and let's not do it. So I was, I said, go ahead and get registered and just get it done. So I'm gonna walk you through this. Here is your indianavoters.com. If you just go to indianavoters.com, indianavoters.com, voters has an S at the end. Okay. If you go there, you see right here's your portal and it tells you you can register to vote. You can check your voting status. You can click to vote by mail. You can look at your voting, uh, uh, voting location and you can look up other stuff. If you go to the apply now. It will walk you through this. This is really easy. You put in your, your name. Your last name. And your driver's license, uh, information here. And then you click, I qualify as a voter with, uh, print disabilities, yes or no? And then you accept the terms. You then go down here and click begin a new, uh, re, uh, registration. And it essentially walks you through this. It is, it's very, it's very easy. It is not, uh, it is not difficult in the least. And, uh, it's, it is something that, um, uh, what is this? It is, uh, something that should, uh, take you exactly three minutes to do. If you have been divorced, if you've moved or just to make sure, you can go in here and hit check your voting status. Check your vote or your registration record. Okay. And here, what you do is you enter your first name, your last name, your date of birth, and you select your county. Okay? So we will do, uh, first name. Pilbry. Now let me pull this off here really quickly. So we're not doxing myself and I'll put it back up there in just one second. And you check your area of, uh, you, you hit your, uh, county and then it will pull up and it will say, search results. And you will look and you will hit continue in the search results. Once you hit continue. It will then pop up here. And let me see. It will tell you that you are active. Active right here. Active. You are registered and able to vote in the next election if otherwise qualified. And so everything's good there. You can run down here and you can look at view all. This gives you who's on your ballot. And it, it tells you, uh, what's going on, uh, for your ballot. It lists the attorney general, lists your Delaware County school board, uh, or your school board for the area you're at. It gives you your county council, uh, races. It gives you your surveyor, your treasurer. Your governor and lieutenant governor. Judge of the circuit court, uh, number two, number two, number three. It then gives you your state representatives, your United States representative, your United States Senator. Okay. Uh, and then your US president. Uh, it then will tell you that there are, uh, some, um, public questions and retention, uh, questions. Okay? If you want to, uh, choose these people, I'm telling you, just so you know where I stand. I am going to retain all of these officers, all of these, uh, court, uh, officials. Uh, all, all of the, uh, Supreme Court justices. Um, so the, there's one, two, three, four. Um, and then the, uh, public question, shall the constitution of the state of Indiana be amended to remove the state superintendent of public instruction? I will tell you right now, I think no. I think that we should vote for this position. I do not think that it is a position that the governor should appoint. I think that we need this position. I've never agreed with this. And so I vote no. I think that the majority of the people are gonna vote yes. It's gonna be what it's gonna be. Um, so there, there is, it is what it is. But that is the, uh, voting and you have until, it is 9:59 right now, 9:58. We are one minute away from the two hour mark. Voter registration will end at 11:59 PM tonight. So please, please, please. Make sure that you're doing that, getting people that you know registered and, uh, ready, ready to go. Uh, okay. So we went into this meeting thinking that there could be some fireworks and thinking that it could be like, oh, whatever. Uh, I, I gotta tell you, I was shocked. Uh huh. It's, uh, a tail and a, uh, a plague mask. And so it's kind of like a weird bird. Um, so I was kind of shocked when I walked into the, uh, meeting and saw that there were so few council members up there. I was, I was very shocked. Uh, disappointed. I was disappointed. Let me tell you that. I was, I was extremely disappointed that that happened. And, uh, I'm going to let those people know that I was disappointed. So, um, uh, yeah, you know, I don't, this was made of my hair. This was made of the hair. Uh, so yeah, that's what I sleep with at night. So, um, basically going through the, uh, council meeting, uh, I will tell you, this is the first Muncie city council meeting that the city of Muncie livestreamed on YouTube. And I know that there are a lot of people that were questioning this. They were questioning why that would be. And people were kind of upset about it and they don't think that it should be happening. They were asking why they're moving back and forth. And listen, everybody is rightfully wondering what in the hell is going on with this constantly changing deal? Quit. Put it all back. Let us be able to comment on the city of Muncie's Facebook page. And quit with all this nonsense. That being said, if they aren't going to do that. If they aren't going to do that. Then I can tell you that I am happy that it's on YouTube. I have said from 2019, why are these not on YouTube? They need to put these on YouTube. These should be on YouTube. So I'm happy that it's on the city, uh, the city of Muncie's YouTube page. And I'm fine with this. Now the city can share the link just like I do. It's all easy for us to share. Of course I livestream it. So, uh, it is what it is. We jumped their feed, but, uh, I'm okay with that. So, um, I'm fine with that. People can go, you can, you can, uh, leave comments on the YouTube page. Um, you can comment under your name. You can comment, uh, under a screen name. So it's a little better in certain ways than what Facebook is. So I think that once people catch on to this, everybody will be, I think everybody will be a little better off with it. So I, I'm okay with that. I, I'm, I gotta tell you, I'm sorry if, um, I'm having a hard time speaking. Last night during my sleep, something, I, I was fighting somebody or biting somebody or fight, biting while fighting. And I bit and I bit literally the inside of my lip. Right? Like in the worst spot possible. And it's, it's hurting me. Um, I don't like YouTube. You can't see comments if it's not live. Sure you can. Yeah, yeah, you can. What happens is, what happens is it's just like these comments. So when you guys come in here and you comment here and it's live. And then say somebody jumps on to watch it like in two hours from now when we're off. It doesn't show the comments straight away, but by tomorrow morning, it does show the, the, the comments you guys are leaving right now. It, it takes about 12 to 24 hours to populate. But all of the comments that people leave in the bottom feed, it will always show those and those are there. So, um, listen, it's not, I, I get it's not everybody's, uh, it's not everybody's favorite thing, but I, I, there are so many more pros than cons with it going to YouTube in, in my personal opinion. So, uh, that's, that's where we are. So watching this meeting unfold, uh, of course it was like I thought it would be the public, the public, uh, uh, hearing got underway and it was, it was, you know, over within just mere moments. It was over. Uh, basically, and then the council, uh, meeting got underway as we thought that it would be. Uh, and yeah, I, well, I, I, that's, I do. I do think that that's probably correct. I think that they, you know, we, we do that, so why, why can't they? We livestream on YouTube and on Facebook. What they're doing is what they're doing, well Teresa, all you gotta do, cause you, you, you come in here and chat. So all you need to do is go back to one of our feeds. Want to go, go back to a show that you've commented on like yesterday or whatever. And uh or whenever you were here last and uh comment uh like look through and see if you can find those comments. The thing is you can load videos and gifs on Facebook and YouTube, you can only post in the comment section. You can load videos. What do you mean load videos?
Facebook, you can put up links to things.
Hmm?
And put up.
You could put, you could put links to things in YouTube?
Not in the livestream, you can't.
Oh, I, okay, well, I guess that's true. I mean, you can do it in the comments.
But YouTube, you can only do this. You can only note.
Yeah. I've never posted anything. I mean, I yeah, I mean, I, I can understand that. They're, they're going to, they're going to share it on uh Facebook where you can then comment under that link, which I guess that's not doing what people are wanting it to do, but um look, the bottom line is they need to get of, of something going to where the meeting is able to be livestreamed. It is able to be viewed. It's able to be viewed on time and it's able to be viewed afterwards anytime you wanna go pull it up. For my use, as long as that's happening, I'm happy about it. Um I can communicate with them. I'll figure out a way to communicate with them. If I can't communicate with them on the video specifically, you know, I'm okay with that. It's not like the people I'm actually communicating to ever see that. The council members, they're not going back and ever watching those. I think some of those council mem- members have never watched one of the council meetings. I think there's some literally that have never went back and watched a council meeting. I think that's absolutely insane to know that. We have a website that could be improved, absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of things. The other thing, now then you get into spending money and, and you know, how much that would be worth, whatever, yada, yada, yada. You know, look, meeting the public where they are and communicating with them where they are is the most important aspect of the city administration's job, in my opinion, communicating with the people that you're representing. So uh you know, yeah, they, they need to do whatever I guess the majority of the people are asking them to do. So, okay, uh we get started with the meeting.
I'd like to ask Dell Basham to give us a.
We do that, we get in, the meeting.
They have parking lot out front.
Um Audi was off to the side. That's why people, people in the audience are saying, why can't we see him? He was off over here to the side to the gentleman uh in this jacket. He was over there. I was to the left of him. So we've got that going on. Uh let's see here.
Sponsored this, I am the one that researched this and I feel like.
What was going on with this? This was insane to me. This, this, this deal, listen to this.
Lowers the speed limit around Westview School.
So there was, what, what, what a, let me go back and see exactly what ordinance this was. This was an ordinance that the council uh they were looking at. And it, it pertained to, let me go back here and see. Okay, amend, this was ordinance nineteen twenty-four. So listen to what happens in ordinance nineteen twenty-four.
Describe the extent of your cleanup. What do you?
Yes.
Okay, so, so everyone is familiar. When the meeting starts, the, the meeting agenda goes uh pledge of allegiance, invocation, citizen recognition, roll call, approval of minutes, appointments to boards and commissions, committee reports and ordinances previously introduced. So this is where they are doing their final vote on things. So if however many new ordinances that were brought up in tonight's meeting, those new ordinances that are introduced tonight and get a passing vote, they move on to next meeting. And in the next meeting, they will be in ordinances previously introduced and they will be read and voted on for a second and final time. So this is where ordinances that are getting ready to be passed or defeated will go. And so this ordinance got brought up last time and they talked about this ordinance last time. They talked about what it was. It was going to be to slow the, the um drivers down in a neighborhood around the school. Everybody was for it, nobody was against it and it was pretty open and shut. So generally what happens is when they get up, they read an ordinance. Jerry will say the ordinance number. Sarah Gollian is the reading secretary, she'll read it. And then they say, is there anybody here to uh speak on this? And then whoever puts the ordinance forward or wants the ordinance will get up and speak. If it's something about the police department, you'll normally get the police uh chief or the deputy chiefs, chiefs, or you'll get the controller, or you might get Ridenour. If it's something from the mayor's perspective, he'll get up or fire department, you know, whoever, whoever does it will get it. If it's someone from like someone else, like they're wanting something done, it's like a citizen or something, they'll get up or a business, they will get up and they will present it or their attorneys will present it. Well, this ordinance wasn't brought up by anybody. It was brought, it was brought forward to the council's attorney by Nora Powell, a sitting city councillor. They, they can write ordinances and put ordinances up, that's part of what they do. So she had talked about it last time, so listen to what happens.
Yes.
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 This is the end of the last.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Ordinance nineteen dash two-four, an ordinance of the city of Muncie amending the traffic schedules set forth in chapter eighty of the city of Muncie code of ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four?
Second.
Okay, so Nora quickly moved it. Sarah seconded it.
Is there anyone here to speak on this tonight?
Is anybody here to speak on it?
Is there anyone here to speak on this tonight?
Yeah.
I make a motion to table it till we get somebody.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. So no one came up to talk about it. So then Jerry immediately goes into motion to table. Okay, well, normally, for example, when the fire department wants something or the police department wants something or the mayor wants something or Tom, Dick or Harry wants something and they put an ordinance through and they don't come to explain the ordinance, I would agree, if they're not there and we don't get any understanding about this, you table it. But this was already addressed last month, all right? Now, to Nora's fault, why Nora didn't speak up right now and say, wait a minute, Jerry, uh if I may, this was the ordinance that I brought forward, this is about this, da, 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 da. That would have solved a lot of issue. I don't know if she was kind of asleep at the wheel. I don't know why she's not there. I don't know what she was doing, but I don't know if she wasn't paying attention. But she didn't do that right away. So listen to what happens.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So Jerry says table it. Rose says I second that because that's normally what they would do in this case. But this is a little bit of a special or different circumstance and I don't know why Nora didn't speak up straight away. All right, listen to what happens. Nobody's here to talk about this and they all act confused. Nora, why wasn't Nora speaking up?
Okay. Roll call, please.
No.
So then she votes no. All right, so listen to what's going on here. They were talking about it. Jerry made a motion to table it and it got seconded, all right? And then they called for the question and now they're in the vote. Matter of fact, Nora's already no, I don't wanna toble, table it. All right, listen.
Yes.
Yes to table it. So one to one.
Yes.
Yes to table it. Uh Sarah voted yes for whatever reason. Sarah knows what it is. I don't know why she voted yes to table it.
No.
McIntosh said no to table, so now it's two to two.
No.
Basham voted no, which is weird because normally he'd be with, with the Republicans. So now it's, it's two to three, two, two yeses and three nos.
No.
All right, two to four.
No.
Oh, all right, so the nos have it.
Yes.
Oh. And, and yes, but the nos haven't. So now they're not tabling it, they've still gotta de- deal with it. All right, so then listen to what happens. Why no one is saying anything at this point still blows my mind.
So um.
Nora, speak up!
We don't have anybody here to talk on it, so do we have any of the council members that wanna say anything?
I, I will.
Well, thank you. Tha- thank you, man.
Mr. President, I sponsored this ordinance. It's in my district. It lowers the speed limit around Westview School from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour.
Oh, wait, oh my God, we're trying to not kill kids? Oh, well, why didn't you, why didn't you say so?
Also uh ensure that speed limit signs are placed on both uh Riley Road and Gilbert Street. Um I think delaying this by tabling it another month will potentially cause issues for the schoolchildren who are wa-
Oh, it's not gonna cause any issues. Don't get into the doom and gloom on me, but the bottom line, you don't have to worry about that because the voting on the tabling it just died. So just, why didn't you speak up ten minutes ago, Nora?
Talking to school in that area and I respectfully request that we go ahead and act on this ordinance.
Ms. Powell, you know how I am on the, on people not showing up to talk on it, so.
Jerry car crashes this right into the mountain because like he, didn't he just understand that it was Nora that sponsored this and put this forward? No one showed up, she's not there, she's on the phone, it's the same as her being there. So again, I don't know why she didn't speak up. This is, this is just total befuddlement.
I understand.
I have a comment. May I? I think we should make, this council should make it like, because sometimes we table it if somebody doesn't show up and sometimes we don't.
No, I don't know what Rose is talking about here. You, 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 first of all, sometime, I mean, everything is like in this case, it needs to be a case by case basis. You can't set uh just a blanket statement like she's getting ready to do. I mean, I understand, I understand the point she's making, but, but you just can't do what she's doing.
Procedures out of respect for all of our time and the people that come, the audience, that whenever there's something like this, if there's no representation, it should be tabled. But that's my, yeah, I don't know if we can legally do that.
We just, we just voted.
Yeah, we, no, I'm not talking about this one in particular, I'm talking in the.
And then right there, I don't understand why there's some weird, weird deal between Basham and Roe. They're both Republicans, but they do not like one another. And why he decided to take that shot at her right there was very weird. Look, I get what she said was kind of out of, it was just kinda weird because you can't do it, I understand, but just say it, like the fact that he just took that shot at her. I love watching all these interpersonal weirdness between them because like, you know, that, that was just like a shot for no reason.
Future.
Mr. Dishman, if I, if I may, very.
Where, where was, hell, Dan Gibson, dude, what, why, where, what are, what are you and Nora doing? Why, where have you been? What's going on? Why, why are you just all now speaking up so late?
Briefly, there are some ordinances that don't necessarily have.
Right, right, this is one of them. And then as soon as Dan Gibson says this, finally, it's like, oh, now we get it. This stuff is just what makes them look so ah like not with it, second class, not, not like in varsity, not, not varsity, junior varsity. Or, or, or T, you know, wiffle ball. It's, they're not even, they're not even junior varsity.
You know, representation from the public, it's not necessarily being, you know, sponsored or requested. In this case, this was requested by Ms. Powell uh and she has spoken on it. So um I, I would also encourage you to, to move forward with a vote on this.
Okay. Mr. Dishman.
Hi, Chris Deegan, Muncie Police. Um we didn't have any direct involvement in this, but I, I certainly would echo the opinions of probably moving forward on this just for safety of enforcement purposes. It doesn't hurt to have extra speed limit signs posted, especially throughout neighborhoods and where we have kids getting picked up at school bus stops. Um but just from the law enforcement side of things, I think that this would be helpful. Thanks.
Clarification for, to what I said. I understand what's going on now, so thank you, Ms. Powell, for sponsoring that. I agree with you, that is very important. What I would like to ask, let me re, reword what I'm trying to say. Unless it's sponsored by a council person here and who can speak on it and authored by that, you know, any ordinance or if somebody from the public or whoever's requesting that is not here to represent or answer questions, I think it's vital and important to table it till they're here. And I think if we do that a couple of times, then people will understand that we're serious. We have questions, we need representation. So that is just my opinion, thank you.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Go ahead, Ms. Powell.
I, I do understand your reasoning, uh councilperson Salvi. However, I don't know why a representative from the neighborhood did not attend. I am the one that sponsored this, I am the one that researched this and I feel like um we shouldn't penalize the schoolchildren just because a neighborhood association member didn't attend.
No, nobody's being penalized, relax. I mean, like we don't need to get all up in hysterics over this because like, you know, no one's, no, it's not gonna get crazy. It could, I get where they're going, but like just, just be calm, be cool, you know, and then this happens, obviously, you know.
Oh, so she is, well, bust my buttons. Why didn't you say that in the first place?
So I mean, you know, that was uh, if we get copyrights, copyright strike for that, I'm gonna be mad. Cause like that was not anything worth getting copyrighted for, but all right. Uh so this whole thing was weird. The council's so strange, I don't understand. I don't, maybe next year we won't have these weird little hiccups.
I agree.
So guess what? They, they vote on it eight to zero, it passes very easy.
If six o'clock would be better, we can change that time, but that five thirty is when the auditorium was available.
Okay, so let's talk about this, all right? Um so they, right there is interesting. So they, they, they just announced there for the fir- at the first time that they have this meeting, listen.
Is that correct, counsel?
Second, anyone here wishing to speak on it? Mr. Deegan, you have the floor.
Hi, yes, Chris Deegan, Muncie Police Department. I know everybody's holding their breath like, oh, he's gonna talk for like thirty-five minutes. Not tonight, I, I think I got everything out last time. Um I'm just up here to stand for any questions if anybody's got any.
Anybody from the council, any questions for Mr. Deegan? Anybody from the audience? Thank you, Mr. Deegan.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Garrett is absent. This, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
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 Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Ordinance twenty-one dash two-four, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rate.
Ordinance 21 dash 24, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. Propo-, oh.
All right.
Muncie Public Transportation Budget.
So I wanna, I wanna just briefly show you here, and, and this is, this is what's really strange to me. Like, sometimes I don't think they, they pay attention to their own crap. I, I don't, I don't know. But, but let's, let's listen here and listen what, what they say here. All right. So this is ordinance, uh, 21, 24, and it's the mitts budget.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 21, 24?
Um.
Okay, so I want you guys to see, all right, look, look, look at this. All right, I know it's hard for you guys to see, but, but you just bear with me. I'm showing you this and I'll tell you what it is and you can take my word for it. You can go on my social media and find this. So here's, here's part one of the agenda. It's a two-part agenda, okay? Right here, right here is ordinance 21, 24. This is mitts budget. Then down here is 22, 24, mitts, uh, Muncie Sanitary Budget. And then 23, 24 is the Muncie Budget. Then right below that, it says, "Public Comment Only." Vote will be considered at the special meeting on October 23rd at 5:30. Now, I have never liked that 5:30 time. That 5:30 time is a bunch of bullshit. They, she had the other ones at 5:15, which is ignorant. The meetings need to be, the earliest the meetings need to be held is 6:00 PM. Really, they need to be at 6:30 or 7 o'clock, but I will take a 6:00 PM meeting, okay? So they have ordinance 21, 22, 23. And then directly after that ordinance, we go into page two where it goes into new ordinances. Well, I didn't want to speak about the transit budget. I didn't want to speak about the sanitary budget, but I did have something to say about the Muncie City Budget, because that's what I was there to speak on. So I was waiting for them to get down to ordinance 23, 24. But they're right now on ordinance 21, 24. And so listen to what happens here. I was very confused and I'm like, wait, what, what are you guys doing? And again, this is just kind of what makes them seem like very, uh, you know, unorganized and like chaotic. They don't even know what's on their own budget, or excuse me, their own agendas.
May I? I, I believe that we need to wait on these, right, on these three budgets. Is that correct, counsel?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I believe that is the subject of a special meeting here, October 23rd, uh, where final action will be taken on those.
Now, I was under the impression that final action would only be taken on the Muncie Budget. I didn't know that they couldn't do, uh, 21 and 22. I thought they could have done mitts and they could have done sanitary district. I'm fine with them doing all three on the 23rd, but okay, whatever, no big deal. All right, let's listen to this. So I'm sitting there thinking, okay, they're getting ready to say, all right, um, does anybody want to come up and talk about 21? And then I, then if they didn't, I thought they would then say 22. Anybody want to come up and talk about 22, which is sanitary district? Okay, then they do or not. And then 23, anybody want to come up and talk? That's what I'm sitting there waiting for them to do, because I was going to get up out of my seat and go, go stand to the podium. But then this is what happens.
Is that, so that's pertaining to Muncie Sanitary District? Yes. Yes, all three. What's the, what was the time, um, for that meeting?
Six.
5:30.
5:30.
If six o'clock would be better, we can change that time, but that 5:
Yeah, six o'clock is always going to be better, you nut! That, don't ever ask that. Six o'clock is better.
30 is when the auditorium was available.
They'll have to be done with the budget, so we'll move, we're moving on. Um, ordinance 22, 24.
Whoa, whoa, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. We, we moved, we skipped past everyone talking and everything, and we're going right on into new ordinances now. And I was getting ready to get mighty heated. So from my seat, I speak up, which I generally don't do.
These, these are new ordinances now. Ordinance 24 dash 24, an ordinance amending Chapter 76, abandoned vehicles of the Muncie Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 24, 24?
I said, I, you can barely hear me. I'm off on the slide. I said, you guys are supposed to go through ordinances 21, 22, and 23 and give public comment. It says that on the agenda.
Uh, counsel, can you explain why we did that?
I, I'm not sure where the public comment issue came from, but yeah, I, it was my understanding. If they're on the agenda and it says for public comment, then you should probably take public comment. I'm not, I don't have the agenda right in front of me.
Right.
But final action will be taken on these on October 23rd.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anybody who want to? Do we have anybody from the audience wants to talk on 20, 22, 24?
23.
22, 23, 24?
Okay, yes.
Uh, yeah, Christopher Bilbury, I just want to say that, uh, I watched the Finance Committee, uh, meetings that you guys held last week or the week before. Um, I just, if you guys are going to, do you know, uh, will you guys be putting out, um, a list of any cuts you're making before the meeting on the 23rd? Or will, will we be able to have access to anything that you guys are looking at cutting? I, I have the budget that that was presented by the administration, but as far as what you guys are working on, you basically just went through everything and talked to the department heads. So when you guys are working individually or whatever, making any cuts, will you guys present that? Will that be in a spreadsheet or what's going to happen? How, when will we see that? Or will we not see that until the 23rd? And then have just a very short time to be able to review it before talking about it. You understand what I'm saying? If you guys are going to take final action on the 23rd, if you're going to make any changes to that budget whatsoever, it would be helpful if the citizens could see or be aware of what you guys are looking or thinking about doing ahead of time. Normally, like, the county, for example, works through those cuts live and on-streamed meeting. It's several meetings, uh, throughout the, throughout the process. So I'm just asking how, I mean, will we not know about what your cuts are until we get here on the 23rd? And then just have a very short period to talk about or what's going to happen with that?
Ms. Powell, can you answer that?
Unfortunately, I cannot make comment on these three ordinances.
Okay, and then she says this, "Unfortunately, I cannot make comment on these three ordinances." And I'm like, what? Like, that threw me off, okay? And then this happens.
Yeah, I, I'll chime in here. I believe October 16th is the Finance Committee, next Finance Committee meeting, and I believe that the, um...
Okay, now, for the very first time ever in the world of ever, I'm now hearing that there's a new Finance Committee meeting scheduled for October 16th. That is not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday. I had never heard of this date. To my knowledge, there was the 23rd. Now there's the 23rd, but before that, there is a Finance Committee meeting on the 16th. Okay, cool. I will take that information and I will be there. And by God, if they don't let people speak at that meeting, I am going to flip my lid because I'm trying to find some answers out.
Discussion regarding cuts will be, uh, discussed during that, but I, obviously no decisions have been made yet on anything related to the budget. But yeah, I think that'll be discussed during October 16th. Um, and, and Ms. Powell, uh, was unable to speak on this because it is an appropriation and she's appearing remotely, uh, in the state law regarding remote appearances. Um, has certain items that are, are carved out of that, so that's why she was unable to, to answer that question. But I, I think, um, October 16th Finance Committee meeting will be when the cuts, if there are any cuts, I don't even know if there are, but those will be discussed.
What time is that meeting on the 16th?
Is that 5:30 also, right now? Is it six?
That, okay, so the sixth, October 16th, the finance, the last finance meeting on the 16th is at six o'clock. Okay, thank you.
So I heard this and I'm like, wait a minute, what did he just say? Now, understand, I like Dan Gibson. I like Dan Gibson. I don't have any issue with Dan Gibson. Dan and I have always had a very good working relationship, okay? I I first of all, I have a hard time when we say Dan. Understand, when I'm talking about the mayor, I'm going to call him Ridenhour or some other name. When I'm talking about the council and I'm talking about Dan, I'm talking normally about Dan Gibson. I like Dan. Dan and I work well together. Dan Gibson and I work well together. We, we have no issues. But I was like, I don't think what he said makes any sense. I, I don't believe what he said because I watch Delaware County do exactly what he's saying she couldn't do all day, every day during budget meetings. There, there, not there, and, and they, they interact and, and there's no issue. So I was like, that makes no sense. I was not originally signed up to speak. Then I signed up to speak because I was going to say something about Dale Basham not communicating. And I was possibly going to say something about AFSMI, depending on what Audi covered or what he didn't. Well, then, when I sat down, I was like, oh, 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 I'm definitely going to speak because I went back and was looking through the law. And no, it does not say what Dan Gibson just said. And it absolutely would have allowed Nora to speak. Now, look, uh, would I have liked for her to tell me where her head is at? Absolutely. Was she going to tell me today over the phone at this council meeting? No. Even if they wouldn't have said that, even if she would have just chirped right up speaking, she wasn't going to let me know what she was thinking about cutting and all this. That just wasn't going to happen. But all I wanted to know about is when I would be able to see him. Maybe they're going to tell me the 23rd's it, but if that's going to be it, I, you know, I, I need to know this. I need to be prepared for it. But if I can possibly see it beforehand, I want to know that too. So that's what I was looking at. So then, that's when I text. Um, okay, that, that's good. That, that's, that, yeah, they probably posted it last week. I just didn't know about it. About, about that. Uh, that, that's good to know, uh, there, Tara. Um, so I, uh, I'm glad, you know, that, that that's out there. I'm glad we found out about it. But I was going to get up and speak at the public comments then and be like, wait a minute. We need to clear the record. What I was just told about the budget was not correct. And I was going to hold Nora and Dan accountable, okay? And so I, I was going to do that. Um, because I was looking through and going through, you know, doing all this stuff. And I was like, wait, wait a minute, this, this doesn't make any sense to me, what he just said. So that's when I text and said, look, wait GW, wait till you hear what I'm getting ready to say. Yada, 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 when I was in, you know, when we were in the chat of the, uh, of the council video. All right, so I'm just like blown away by what they said. But okay, whatever, we'll deal with it at the public comments.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Moving on to new ordinance.
So.
24 dash 24.
Then they go through.
24 dash 24, an ordinance amending Chapter 76, abandoned vehicles of the Muncie Code of Ordinances.
Abandoned vehicle thing was like way too long.
It's going to go in, I thought that was.
I just feel like Deegan has to be up here. And when he comes up here, even on the things that are easy, it's like, man, they, they gotta turn them always into some massive like ordeal. It's insane. I just don't understand that. I don't like it. I, I don't know why it all has to be so crazy. So, um, if you want to go back and watch that, watch that. There was back and forth about the abandoned vehicles. I'm, I understand where the council is coming from. I don't like the idea that the police can just go willy-nilly and just start doing stuff. Don't come on my property doing shit, you know, at the same time. I, you know, junking it up, you, you know, it's the same thing as the solar fields, you know? You have a right to do what you want to do on your property, as long as what you're starting to do doesn't start to infringe on everyone else's, you know, enjoyment of their property at the same time. If you want to, you know, move out and have a, you know, if you, if you want to live in an industrial area and be able to junk it up, move there. If you want to live out in the middle of nowhere, out in the county, and have a bunch of shit on your property and do all that, do that. But, you know, don't move right next to me, you know, in my neighborhood and then build a fortress out of vehicles on our property line. Like, I get it, you know? But go back and watch that. That was a bunch of insanity, all right? Then we finally figure out where the annexation is coming from, all right? And I'm just going to give you a little bit of this because we did bring it up and I just want to let everybody know.
My name is Kathy Van Ice and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor. And I do want to thank you guys for hearing, or thanking this board for hearing this, uh, need for this resolution or this ordinance. This property is on the northwest corner of the intersection of Bethel and Morrison. Um, the half of the property right now is within the city of Muncie. It was annexed around the 2000 era where they were trying to take the, uh, city limits north
Yeah.
to take in Heron Point. And only half of these parcels were annexed. Now we have a parcel of land that I can't go forward with because half is in the county and half is in the city. The south half of the property is variety business. The north parcel is, uh, zone R5. The problem is, is to re-divide or divide these properties in any way. I now don't have either the road frontage or the back piece on the northern becomes landlocked. So if I can't combine them, I need to be able to combine them into one big parcel. The north part will stay R5 as the ownership of Souders. And the sa-, the south part will be Edgensen's property on there, uh, in the variety business. The whole goal is, is to make these so that they can be, stay in compliance, but also to be able to make them so that they're one unit, uh, in taxing purposes.
Do, do you know what, uh, the property is going to be used for, like a fuel station or anything?
The property on the south, I believe they've got a, right now, a pending, um, for, um, a convenience store. Now, the property on the south is still zoned R5, which means to be able to move forward. If they're going to do anything like a convenience store, I'd have to get, come back before a rezoning. So, but one step at a time, I've got to get them as one unit, and that's where I am tonight. Um, the south part, they do have a pending, um, offer that has already had one extension. And I did kind of send an email asking if you would.
Without boring everyone to death, I'm just going to show you basically where this is because we, we did talk about this. So, on the map, this is, this is Bethel running this way. And this is Morrison running this way, all right? Here's, here's Morrison running this way and Bethel. Where she's talking about is this area right here, okay? And I don't know if this dark to light area is the dividing point that she's maybe talking about, maybe so, I don't know. But this is the part of area that we are going to annex into the city of Muncie. And just so I can show you where this is on the bigger map, okay? Here is, uh, here's McGalliard. Okay, and coming out here, uh, here's, here is Walmart. Walmart's right here. This is Morrison. So get off there. This little section right here is where we're talking about annexing. No big deal. It is what it is. Rock and roll. Rock and roll. Uh, so, you know, uh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And GW is saying that they're going to sell it to a, they're going to sell, GW is saying they're going to sell it to Dollar General. Kate's saying it's a little bit northwest. No, where we were looking at Kate was right here. It's actually, it's actually just a hop, skip and a jump kind of northeast. So you and I, here's the Meyer store. Where you and I were looking was this area right here. We were trying to figure out what was like four acres right around in here. And so this is basically as a crow fly is just right there. But it's basically northeast from there. So this is, I don't know, it was very strange. But we weren't off for, for not having any information. You and I did a really damn good job. I mean, you know, I'm happy with it. If, if we were planning dropping a bomb, you know, we would have been doing all right. So, uh, that's, that's that. Uh, okay, back to the, back to the meeting. We're all, it's almost done. This meeting was very, very strange. This won't be a long, a long show tonight, folks. We'll get ready to wrap, wrap this up. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we'll get through, they, they obviously vote to approve this lady's, the annexation. Everything was good and fantastic. All right, the next one there then.
To council, like make, do we need to do anything in order for this to be able to go on to the special meeting? Or will it, can we just list it there?
I mean, yeah, it would be.
Good evening, Dan Ridenhour. Actually, I shared this idea in some meetings earlier this year with a couple council members. Actually, I shared it with all the council members and a couple of them took it and ran with it. So this is a designated outdoor refreshment areas and we're looking at doing three of them in the city. I just wanted to make sure someone got up and spoke about it, but it's, it's coming from actually the council. They thought it was a great idea and, and I, I did too. So I'm, I'm not the expert on it. I don't even drink. But I, I see that there could be some big advantages. And so, so we're doing three different areas for those in the audience who don't.
All right. I, I came this close to getting a copy of this tonight. And then I just completely forgot about it. I was going to go up and, yeah, yeah, that's, you're exactly right, Kate. That was a slam on the council after the school kid thing. Absolutely. Uh, because this seemed, I mean, the council was involved in this seemed, this seems like a smart idea. I'm a, I should have got a copy of this. I will get a copy of it from one of the council members. So we can look at where exactly this is talking. I don't even know. All right, backup. I don't know where they're, I mean, I know where the village is. I know where downtown is. I know, whatever. This thing became so convoluted. It's just like when they have like the barbecue thing downtown or they have some of the events downtown and they close off the streets and they allow someone to go buy a beer at docks. I mean, I don't know if these places are up anymore and, and walk around and whatever. I don't have, I'm not a drinker. I don't have a problem with this. I do not have a problem with this. I also, I want them to pass it. I think it'll be good. I don't think it'll, I don't think it's going to increase anything. I don't think it's going to be bad. I also respect very great, I almost got up. I didn't want to prolong it anymore. But I almost got up and, and told Green, Counselor Green, that I, I supported what he said. Not that I don't support this, but I know it's hard for him to do what he's saying. And he's coming from it and, and he's going to get hate and knock. And that's just what happens. He's coming from it from a faith-based man. He's a preacher. And so anytime he hears something like this, he's going to be like, whoa, you know, that's not, I don't, I don't like that. I get it. I understand where he's coming from and I, that had, you know, I know being in that position, he's the unpopular one, the odd man out. And I'm okay with his thoughts on that. I say, though, you, you don't punish everyone down there. That comes down to parent, parenting your children and teaching your kids what is right and what is wrong and, and what is okay and what is not okay. And, 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 you know, doing that. It also is a thing where people in this situation that will be participating in this, they have to still follow the law. There was some weird ass questions asked tonight. They're saying, they're saying like, is this going to change the, the the legal age to drink? Are, you know, kids going to be drinking? Is, you know, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be, you know, wild and crazy fornicating is going to be happening and, and drugs, open air market drug. I'm like, holy shit, folks. We're talking about how many church groups go to Kings Island? This is the same thing as at Kings Island. You can walk from one area with a beer in your hand to another area with a beer in your hand. If you get out of control or get wonky or start yelling, you can be arrested for disorderly conduct. You can be arrested for public intoxication. This, we are not doing away with laws. Bottom line, I don't even know that anybody would really screw with anybody if they walked from La Jody's to the Mexican place with a beer out in the open. If you did that right now, nobody would probably screw with you. Now, the difference is those, those businesses couldn't allot you to buy, buy a beer and walk out of their store with it. They're not going to do that. With this, they will allow you to do that. Uh, so that's, that's the one thing there that's, you know, going to be a little different. But this is the thing where I, I get where elected officials are always like, there's people that are always going to fight you on everything. First of all, yeah, that's part of being government. That's part of being in the government. But you know, I, I don't have a problem with this. I get everyone being on all sides of this. And I'm not a drinker. Hey, let me tell you this. I don't smoke cigarettes. And I hate nothing more than being, than being around people smoking, smoking on me, having it on my clothes, having it in my hair. I hate it. I hate it. I hate it. But let me tell you this. Sometimes you just want to go to a bar and walk in and it be smoky and dark and, and go in and be in that atmosphere. That's the part of it is like, have, anybody walked into a bar and it's been like clear and you can see and, you know, your eyes don't hurt. It's almost like, you know what I mean? It's just, I don't know. I don't know. The other thing I thought was hilarious is boy, oh, boy, is the Board of Works not going to like this. I'm glad that Audi said something about it. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, I'm glad that Audi does the same thing to me. Audi does the same thing to me. It's like a smokehouse over there. I, look, I don't care. Cause I don't care. I'm not going to tell someone what they, I don't have a problem what they do in their own house. I'm just talking about being in a restaurant and things like that. But there is something about going in. I remember one time my dad and I went to a, like a UFC style fight, karate, kickboxing, boxing match here in Muncie with a bunch of different fighters. And he and I went in there and we had a great time. And we, when we left, our eyes were both so red from all the smoke in there. And I remember like it hung in the air, like I could lower myself and get down below it and it was okay. But then you set up and you were right in it. And none of that shit's good. First, it's going to kill us, but we're all going to die of something like, you got to live a little bit. I get it. I don't have a problem. It is, it is, it is what it is. I don't, you know? I.
No one is.
That they had about this, the back and forth for so long was like crazy. And then the one thing to Holly Yipe, the, the thing that I was waiting for them to say, and I about got up and spoke because Holly Yipe's like, well, wait a minute, what about the people in the neighborhood? Here's what she maybe doesn't know. And I hope maybe Holly's listening to this. Holly, if you do hear this, the way the mayor has it planned, there ain't going to be anybody living down in that neighborhood you're talking about. They're going to be taking, Roe kind of hinted to it, that all of the homes are owned by one person. They are getting rid of the family-owned homes in that area. It's not going to be like that. There are going to be some of the, like the townhomes down further, closer away, closer to Dan's house, closer to the river away from Elm Street. But they're going to totally do away with, with that. It's more than Rashford. The other, the other gentleman that, that's owning up everything down in there is, oh, I knew that you would do that to me. Let's just pull up our handy dandy little beacon here and let's look. Because we might as well do it because this is something that is important. Okay, we are in downtown Muncie and we are on Beacon. And we are going to look and see what we got going on. This is where we're at, McKinney Neighborhood. Okay, coming around the bend. White River. Okay. Okay. Here is Central. Here is Wiser. Okay, so specifically like talking, we are talking about, um, like, okay, let's see who owns these. Okay, interesting to me. Hickory and Elm. Hickory and Elm. Hey Kate, can you pull up the Indiana Secretary of State's thing? And find out who Bill Lett, Bill Lett owns a bunch of them. Yeah, Bill Lett is, is, owns a bunch of homes in that area. Man, these people are gonna, these people are going to make a killing. They are gonna just absolutely make a freaking killing down here in this area. MDJ Construction. There's, there's something like Give a Dog a Bone or something like that. Let me find it. Hickory and Elm, Hickory and Elm LLC. That's interesting because I hadn't seen this. New Age Homes LLC. Man, there's so much. I need to come on here and take a look at this and, and Hickory and Elm, Hickory and Elm. Dogtown LLC. Yeah, that's that one.
Hickory and Elm is Margaret Lett.
Yep. Okay, so that's Bill Lett, related to Bill Lett. That's funny.
So what's, what's the other one? The dog what?
Okay, the other one is Dogtown LLC.
One word?
Dog, yeah.
Dogtown LLC, William Lett.
See, that's where you know something funky is going on.
Okay, what else?
When they are buying it up, like one person's buying up everything under like six different companies. It's like, what, why, why are you doing that? That's, that's a little funky. Uh, okay, let me see here. Um, all right, let's do, let me, I'm trying to find another one on here. Come on. Give it to me. MDJ Construction. MDJ Construction.
Mike Delta Jeep.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I know who this is.
Hold on.
This is Jennings.
Matthew Jennings.
Matthew Jennings. Oh, yeah. All right. LC and SS Investments.
Lima Charlie and Sierra Sierra Investments.
Yeah.
Sorry. Have to prove I'm not a robot. Louis R. Coulter.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So this is the, yeah. So this is like the who's who of, this is like real life Monopoly. Folks.
Anything else, Christopher?
Give a, give a Bill a Lett, let a Bill a bone? I don't even understand what's happening. Yeah, no, that's it. Thank you very much. I'm going to have to come down and take a look at, get all of that stuff at some point. Because there is some craziness going on. Just so you, I might as well show you guys this. This is important. So this is where we're talking about. Okay? This is where we are talking. Okay, so just so you guys are kind of familiar with what's happening. For those of you that know Muncie, here's River, here is Central. This, this little, the left part of the Y is Walnut. This is Granville, Granville here. This road right here is where the mayor lives. All right? That's, that's where the mayor lives. Here's the river. Now here's the McKinley Neighborhood and all of these homes in this area. Okay? All of these little homes, all these old Muncie, you know, just built right on top of each other. You can actually see where they've gotten rid of so many homes. This is just empty, 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 empty. Um, these used to be the really ran down, like in the nineties. In the nineties, this was a really scary area of town. Uh, in the, the late eighties, late, late eighties, early nineties. This was a really scary area of town. And this is what they're now calling the McKinney, this is the McKinley Live Learn Neighborhood. They're calling it the Live Learn. And this is where they're going to build all of those townhomes. And this is, they're going to put up that real fancy area here, this road, this Columbus and Walnut. Uh, here's where the Y is at now. So this is like a whole big deal. Um, right here is the, uh, oh, shit, Elm Street Brewery. Okay? Uh, they just, they just sold off Concannon's, Michael Concannon just sold that there here. Okay, that's, that's, should be changing. Okay, that's, that's, should be changing anytime, uh, and they're, they're gonna wanna do away with all this. Dan and co have a plan for this and the people down in here who have been buying up these little pieces of Monopoly, pieces down here, they are gonna make a killing. They are gonna make a killing, folks. And I'm telling you, I'm telling you, yeah, I'm not gonna tell you. No. I can't say that. Never mind. It's gonna be interesting to see what's gonna happen. Yep. Yep, 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 yep. Uh, they're gonna rebuild, line their pockets and everything will be magically, everything will magically change. Yeah, that's, that is definitely true. So, uh, it's gonna be weird to, to see kinda what happens there, um, because I've been saying this now since Dan's first year in, since 2021. Since like his, going into his second year in office. And it's funny to see how many more of those little places were, are bought up. They used to be, it used to be all owned by the Delaware Advancement Corp. It was owned by the Muncie, uh, um, the Muncie, um, Muncie Redevelopment Commission and a bunch of it's been bought off by these five or six same people, uh, under several different companies and it's, it's comical. Uh, all right, uh, onward with the meeting.
Anyone else like to talk from the council?
You have a lady out there. I think it will have an adverse effect upon the city downtown on some of those events. Parents won't want to bring their children in and introduce them, uh, to a bunch of drunk people. Because we know that people are not just gonna come and just drink a little. They're going to be in excess.
They're gonna go wild.
Most of the time it happens that way. I'm concerned about that. And I'm wondering, are, are we tying the, the hands of the police department as far as safety? Are they going to be able to?
With is that even if the, they go by all the rules, got the container, you can see it and all of that. The consumption itself can bring on extra other things, fights, arguments, what have you. So my thing is, I'm having a hard time seeing a lot of the cops or, I'm sorry, officers around town, let alone gonna be designated to drive, you know, to guard these places. And I understand what this is about.
That's the sound of the police.
Economics or what have you. But I, I just feel like it's a great opportunity also to add to the police force.
Yeah, I would, and I appreciate your comments greatly and, and I understand all the concerns. I would only be at risk if you couldn't carry open containers of coffee around. Uh, because I, I just don't, lots of coffee. But I would just remind you that this is, this is an introduction.
Yeah.
And I think I will do-
I always hate when they say that. They're like, yeah, just vote on it. It's just an introduction. Right. But if something sucks and we don't want it and you wanna kill it, go ahead and kill it in the introduction, then that way we don't even have to worry about something stupid happening for a second read. I always hate when they say that. That's, I just, that's, that's nuts to me. That's a, that's fallacy thinking to say that. Okay, let's kill it now if we want, if that's what we still wanna do. I just hate when they always say that.
Do my best, uh, with the assistance of the two council members that brought this forward to, maybe we can have the police chief from Yorktown here at the next meeting and the police-
That was kinda shocking that he said that. The reason he said that was because Yorktown recently did this. Newcastle's getting ready to do this. I don't have a problem with this. I get what you're all saying. I get what people are saying. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be bad. It's not gonna affect us that bad. I don't, I just, from my, my past experience in law enforcement, I just don't think that this is gonna be that big of a deal.
Chief from Muncie here at the next meeting. You can ask them-
They like, they, they act like they're gonna open this up and then immediately we're gonna have an onslaught of college kids running down to the, to downtown Muncie to just run around and see all of our really cool what? What, what do we have down there that's gonna hold the attention of college kids? We've got, we've got a couple eateries most college kids don't eat at. And it's not like, with it, folks, like as hard, Dan wants to make the city of Muncie caramel. He wants us to be Noblesville so bad. He wants us to be just an area where we walk and it's just always an, an open little, Muncie is far, 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 far out from that. It's not gonna be in our lifetimes, man. I, that would be cool. I wish it was like that. I wish, I would, I loved London, man. You know what? Like it was great. I would love to live in a place where I just don't own a car. I just walk 15 minute city, man. Ooh, ooh, ooh. I mean, I, I, I'm a joke, joking about that, but I like the whole concept he's going for, but we just not, not going to have it anytime soon. And I don't see this bringing down a massive onslaught of people. What, what's he afraid, what we're all afraid of? The attorneys are gonna get drunk and go crazy? And maybe we do need to be worried about that because it's the attorneys that always get drunk and they're peeing in the road with cocaine in their pocket and the hooker in the car. So, all right, maybe it's a problem.
Well, I meant, I meant, I'm, you're right. University police. Yorktown already approved.
Pal, do you, um, have any problems with us being introduced since our budget's in process?
Hi, Holly Yipe back again. I just wanna say that I really enjoy going to local events where they-
Moving into resolutions, resolutions 10 dash 24.
Resolution 10 dash 24, a resolution of the city of Muncie adopting the fiscal plan for the voluntary annexation of certain property known as the voluntary Edgerton slash Souders Annexation.
Is there a motion to introduce resolution 10 dash 24?
Uh, this would be, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this would be for adoption as a resolution.
It's for adoption.
Good Lord, what's happening, man? Yeah.
Anyone wishing to speak?
Three separate areas. Yeah, I, I get that. What, what's that gotta do with anything? So I, the, any, any one of the areas could be defeated when it goes to the alcohol, uh, the state board. And we could just get two areas. We, we could have up to seven areas in a city or in the county or what, in the city, I guess. And right now they're, they're trying to put three in. So it's, I don't, I don't see this changing anything at, at Bolts. This is not gonna, I don't, this is not gonna change anything at Bol State. Uh, they can still, the, I just don't see this changing anything at Bol State from what it, it's already like that. Listen, I'm telling you, I, I have, I have been policing on, in the village and it's already that way. It's already that way. So I, I just don't see this, I don't see this changing. Absolutely. Definitely, definitely partied down there. I've arrested people down there. I don't see this, uh, I just don't see this being a big, big deal. I, I don't, I don't see this changing anything that this, this is not going to affect anything in the village from what it already is. This is already happening in the village.
Speak on resolution 10 dash 24. You from the council? Oh, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Ridenour. Just wanted to speak on this. Uh, this is for the voluntary annexation. Uh, I did not prepare the fiscal plan, um, that was provided, but I did review it and it all seemed in order to me. And it's a necessary component of this annexation.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on this?
Uh, Mr. Dishman, if I could just briefly explain what the fiscal plan is.
Thanks. Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, so yeah, uh, as the mayor mentioned, this is a required component of any annexation. Um, and it was, uh, prepared by a financial analyst or financial consultant for the city. And it essentially just sets forth the plan for extending services to, uh, the annexed area by the city. How much it's going to cost, uh, that type of thing. And it also shows the revenue that'll be generated by the taxes. Um, as the fiscal plan says, there is no cost right now to the city to extend services. Uh, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there is going to obviously be some sort of, uh, increase in revenue from taxes.
Ta-da.
Ms. Pal, do you, um, have any problems with this being introduced?
No.
A replacement fire station.
All right, this is the biggest thing we're not going.
24 and-
Here's the bot.
Motion and second. Do you have anybody here tonight?
I've been against this from day one.
Talk on this.
Mr. President, this is an adoption, not an introduction, right? Okay, good.
He keeps saying that.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Greg Marts. I'm a GM Development and, uh, thank you for having me again, uh, this evening. I'm coming with good news, which is that, uh, this summer we, uh, were able to finish our design processes for the, uh, Station Six Fire Station. Tonight, we're almost exactly three and a half years from the time when we first started talking about this. Uh, I know I've been in front of you several times. The reason we're in front of you again tonight is because, uh, in your, uh, January council meeting, there is a, uh, resolution adopted when you approved the project, uh, back then. It said when we complete design, that would allow us to complete the contract documents in that we'd essentially come before you just to, uh, signal that that process is done and that we're ready to start construction. And so, uh, hopefully this will all come as good news for you all. I know you've all been very supportive in the past, which I'm very thankful for. Uh, the other one note I did have was to say a special thanks to the fire department. Uh, as you can imagine, when you're, uh, designing a project, there is, uh, quite a bit of communication going back and forth. Uh, uh, they have been almost immediately responding every single time we've had a question.
Of course, they want this.
And it's been, uh, a very pleasant experience with them. So I wanted to say a special thank you to them. And, uh, if you do authorize moving forward with the contract tonight, then our plan is to get going with construction, uh, even yet this month.
Woo, right away, straight away.
That's all I have prepared for you, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, um, do you, um, you know, like we talked the last time, are you still planning on using local labor here?
Yes, we have about, uh, 157 subcontractors on the bid list. If there's anyone else you would like us to include, or if there's anyone you just wanna make sure is on that list, uh, obviously please feel free, uh, to reach out to me. The Lyona guys have been very helpful. They've given us their entire list and that is part of that, uh, 157. Um, so yes, yes, sir. Uh, we've, I remember that and that is, uh, that's how we've put the subcontractor list together.
Okay, could you share that list?
He looks like, he looks like his cousin. He looks like Aaron Clark if there was some kind of like a, uh, a chemical accident.
With us, please.
Kinda like the Joker.
It's all-
Oh yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Just so that we were not bombarding you. So if a business we already know, okay?
That's a good idea. Great idea.
Bombarding.
Yeah, I had noticed that too, reading through it, that there wasn't really any language in there, like talking about-
Good get.
And I mean, you know, having any teeth. I mean, it's nice that we have that list and that you're, you know, looking into it. But I'm just wondering if there's any way to get something into the agreement that gives it a little more teeth saying, you know, somehow, you know, that, I would like to see something like that, that says we are trying to use, you know, I, I don't know exactly what that is at this point. I haven't put an amendment together honestly yet. But, um, I'd like to see something that where we're giving, you know, first, first choice even. I mean, I understand that we're not always going to find everything you need locally or union, but I would like to, to try a little more.
Yep.
Go ahead, Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
I don't think he was talking.
Anyone else from the-
Great with the-
Yes, sir.
With the relocation of the station. Are there any?
Is it gonna cost anything?
By, uh, the Santry Sewer Line is on the other side.
It's gonna be wonderful.
But I would think that-
Right now, um, for adoption. So I mean, I would personally, you know, like to amend it so that we can look into that language and, or however we need to do that. I mean, that would be what I would wanna do, would, would want to say is, you know, when we could look at this, see if we can kinda, kinda come up with some language where it would just be like, like I say, first, first pass, first choice, you know, whatever that is. And then be able to still keep it on track and, you know, cause we do have, we could add it to the, um, budget hearing. I mean, that's my-
Yeah, right.
I guess. I don't know, Dan Gibson, how, is that a possibility to be able to even do?
To be able to, to make an amendment.
I, I don't understand why we are this far into the year. We are into October and this woman still has to ask if making amendments is, is something that we can do. We've got to get to a point where these people start feeling like they know what they're doing and they have some confidence behind the actions that they're making and they're taking. It's crazy.
I guess the amendment to the resolution, is that how that would have to be handled or?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could either have it in the contract or just make the approval of the agreement contingent upon certain language being added. And that could just simply be, uh, contingent upon an inclusion of language placing a priority on the use of local labor, labor.
So you would assure us of that language and we could go ahead and pass this resolution tonight? Is that what you're saying, counselor?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you could make an amendment to the resolution saying your approval of the agreement is contingent or requires, uh, the inclusion of such language in the agreement. And I, I don't know exactly what language you're looking for, but during that discussion, something that popped into my mind immediately was just, uh, language that makes the use of local, local labor a priority in the bidding process.
Could I follow up on that, President Dishman? We have a, we have a motion and a second, correct? To pass this resolution as written. What is your recommendation right now?
Boop, boop. And the attorney's gone.
Who doesn't know what you're talking to?
Okay, that's to you, Dan. Oh, we've lost contact.
I apologize. Yeah.
Her phone just died.
That's, uh, dead, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion that maybe, um-
No, because her phone died. We no longer have Nora or the attorney on the line.
Maybe the language might, I'm sorry.
We don't have counsel with us right now.
Oh, so I can't talk? Okay.
No.
Well, we have a question on, on the-
First of all, that's nuts. First of all, you don't have to wait because we don't have counsel. You, you know, there are some times that the city attorney just doesn't come to meetings. Some councils don't even have an attorney in the meeting. They, they only write them. Your attorney doesn't have to be there. You're the elected official, man. Like she's so backwards. It's nuts to me and they all just, they all are, they all are. Even Nora, who I have liked a lot of things that she's done, seems so backwards this time around. I don't understand. I don't quite get the, this, I don't know, man. It's nuts, but they're like, a, a, and then honestly, no one should be, they've got a, if they've called for a question, I don't remember them doing that, but then let's listen to what Basham says here.
To edit it on the table.
I, I call question, but, but we don't have counsel right now. I'm not sure what that means. So, can you, can you text? I apologize.
Jesus. You know, it's actually good that you guys don't see the actual rest of the council. Because if you could have seen the rest of what we were seeing, it looks even worse than this. Because this looks like two people are just fumbling with a phone. What we were witnessing was everybody was fumbling with a phone. You've got, you've got Mason, it was just sitting there not doing anything and, and, uh, Billy Mack just not really doing anything. And Ro had her phone and she was fumbling. And Roe had her phone, and she was fumbling, and these two were fighting with a phone. And you've got Green and, and Basham that were kind of messing with a phone. And it's just like, nobody knew what was going on. She gave up, and she walked around. She always acts like, I like, I hate to say it, but I, I hope that people out there can sense what I'm. I hope, I hope that everyone out there can, can see. She walks like she's afraid that someone's gonna yell at her. Always. Very, very strange how she does that.
There's the thing you need to leave. And you can tap in some of the link to you.
Hey, Jerry.
Yeah. Sarah's got a question for you.
And then can someone else call Nora?
God, we still have Nora on the phone? Not one of these people could have put Nora in this time?
No, I, I don't have a question. I, I think we have a, we have a, we have a motion and a second, and we've had a call for the question. With counsel or not, the question has been called, and we need to take a vote.
Yeah.
Can you hear?
He's right.
Can we, can we amend this later on, Dan?
You could amend it later on, yes. But if the question's been called on the motion to adopt, then you need to move forward with that. And I don't.
I called the question.
I didn't hear what happened. The Zoom I was on, I believe we lost connection. I don't know, but.
I did call the question.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep, we'll keep you on the line. We'll go ahead.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, hang on. Go ahead.
And they hadn't even given public comment and public a chance to comment.
This is a very important decision tonight you guys are making because we're gonna spend a bunch of money, and we still don't know a price tag on this. When we passed this in January, February, or March, whenever it was, y'all said that the money would be appropriated through the council. They're bringing this up as a resolution tonight to start spending the money without telling you guys exactly how much it's gonna cost. Skipping the process of the ordinances to get approval by the council to spend $8.9 million or whatever it was. We don't have a price on this yet, folks. You guys agreed at the meeting that you would approve the budget on this, and by putting this as a resolution and sending it out as a bot saying, go for it, build it. You have not put no money value on this other than the, what was it, 8.9 million or 8.4 million or whatever it was? So remember when we discussed this in January, February, you guys said you would come back. And now we're here at this point, now we're ready to spend eight and a half million, nine million dollars on a fire station.
And you don't see it, but when he says that, Sarah agrees with him.
So think about that when you guys vote tonight, please, because y'all set up and said that you would come back with the numbers and that you guys would approve the numbers before allowing this to be built under the bot. Thank you.
Christopher Bilbury, I want you guys, the eight of you, I think if Nora's back on the phone, the eight of you that are here that are gonna be voting on this tonight, I want you to really consider what's going on because you guys have been discussing this. And then in the middle of discussing this, a couple counselors have had a couple different thoughts. And then in the middle of trying to get that, we had the phone go down. So legal counsel wasn't there to ask the question of. And then during that process, it seems like we've got a couple counselors that's like, let's call, let's do it, let's do it now. We gotta do it now. Let's do it now. Okay? So I want to make sure that you guys are aware that if they're gonna force you into voting on this, if you're gonna be forced to vote on this motion, you can vote no. And then one of you, Counselor Gollian, can then make another motion with what your amendment is. And then one of you can second it, and then you can do it the right way. You don't.
And Gollian and Mason and Roe were all shaking their head yes as I was looking at them. They were all kind of, kind of in agreement with what I was saying, like, or at least, I don't know if they were in agreement. Let me back that up. I have no idea what they were thinking. Maybe they were watching The Simpsons or who knows what was going on up top. But they were shaking their heads in what looks like an affirmative action with affirmative, you know, like, yeah, looking like they were saying yes.
Have to force it down people's throats. It doesn't have to be done in this, well, we gotta hurry and do this, we gotta hurry and do this. My question is, last council meeting, it was either September meeting or the August meeting, towards the end of the meeting, Counselor Gollian, am I saying that right, Gollian? Yeah, I think that is. Counselor Gollian looked to ask a question about the bot and ask if someone from the administration was here, and it was towards the end of the meeting, so no one from the administration was here. And you had a question at that point. My question to you personally is, whatever your question was that time, whether that was in August or September, has that question been answered to your satisfaction by this time tonight? Have you got whatever paperwork you were looking for or whatever answer? And if you have, is it okay? Is it not okay? And, you know, you really need to vote off that. And, and the rest of you sitting up there, you, you need to understand that. You don't have to vote yes just because the question's been called. You can vote no, and then immediately make another motion to do it with that wording in there. Let's get it right rather than vote on it and say, we'll fix it later. Because I promise you, if we do that, we're not gonna ever fix it later. We might as well do it right and be done with it.
Mr. President, let the record show that I agree 100% with what you just said. Let's vote, and if we desire to make the amendment, then we restate.
Now, what you, what you can't, I, I wish it would have, they do always do the wrong things. I wish they was like, I wish they were like Madison County, and they put up both shots. Because you can see the chief deputy clerk down here, she's smiling. And you could hear when he said that, there was a little bit of a quiet, like audible gasp. Like, because people in the room were like making noise. It was quite shocking.
Um, let the record show that I agree 100% with what you just said. Let's vote, and if we desire to make the amendment, then we restate the new resolution with said amendment, and then we can vote. Sure.
Yep.
Well stated, Mr. Bilbury.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Basham. All right. Okay.
Now, I, I, listen to me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you. I'm going to let, I'm going to let. Huh, I'm gonna let the last 280 days completely melt out of my mind. Because what he just did right there, I, the way he's like smiling, I didn't even hear him say, well stated, Mr. Bilbury, and his little smirk he's doing there. I agree with Jackie. I do agree with Jackie. Um, I think that he, he did do this in a very, um, whatever she said, in a very kind of approving manner. And I, I do. I, I do take that. So I appreciate him being like that, and well played, Mr. Basham there. I, I thank you. And maybe, maybe we're starting a whole new step forward here. I'm willing to let bygones be bygones and, and see where this beautiful relationship can go.
Let's call the question.
See, I mean, it did. I think he likes you, Chris. Hey, he might, we might, we, you know, maybe it's like, hey, listen to me. I've had far worse enemies turn into friends. So you, in his mob boss, hey, I listen, I, one thing I'm not gonna fight about, even when he dresses like the Joker or whatnot, the dude is a sharp dressed, is sharp dressed man. I'm telling you, he is on point. So I, I can't complain about, about his attire. Even when it's wild and funky and just completely obtuse, he's always sharp. So.
The question is on the table, so.
I just wanted to say real quick, thanks for all you guys' work on this over the last years. And we're looking forward to not shoveling water out of our basement and our, which is our kitchen. So thanks, guys.
Mr. Dishman, Ms. Powell, what? Ms. Powell would like to say something.
I, I just would like clarification because my, my line went down. And so when my, the communication went out, Ms. Counselperson Gollian was talking about making amendment. There was some discussion, and then I lost the meeting. What question has been called? What has question been called for? An amendment or to adopt as presented?
Adopt as presented.
Okay.
But we can go back and amend it after we.
I can't really hear what's going on.
Anyone else wishing to talk?
I'm sorry.
Anybody from the audience? Any more from the council?
I just had one more clarification. The appropriation by ordinance was passed in May. So we're not trying to slide a resolution in. We passed it. We did it. You know, I mean, I mean, we've all been here. You know, this is just the resolution because the way the ordinance was passed, where Mr. Mars would come back and say, here is the specs, here is the details. And you guys have all that now. So thank you.
Yeah, actually, it was for the bot agreement, and that's what it is. It's the, the resolution has the bot agreement. So it is, it is what this is, like the correct next step for this.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, Jackie.
No.
Yes.
Look at Roe.
No. No.
No.
Yes. Say it again.
Counselor Gibson.
Well, I didn't hear the vote.
Four, four, since there were eight of us.
It's no action. You can, if somebody wants to make another motion.
Mr. President, could, could you help someone on this table with this new wording that would include, shall we say, we, that we, someone could possibly motion to pass the current resolution with a list to be provided by our council with whom we have full confidence to represent our council as, as you have heard us speak. Are you there, counselor?
Yes, yes, I'm here. And so I think the, uh, the amendment would be the approval of the bot agreement is subject to, um, the inclusion of language in the contract that places a priority on local, the use of local labor.
I so move.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Are you laughing?
Yes.
I'm terribly sorry, but I don't know what we're voting on because Rose Selby, she dropped my call. So can I have clarification on what we're voting on at this point?
The amended version.
Yes, on the amendment. Yes.
Sorry.
Roe, can you make it so I can hear what's being said? Can you push your phone out a little?
Yes.
She said yes. She said yes. Are you asking me yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Y'all gotta be here from now on.
Moving on to.
She said it.
Resolution 12.
You ought to be here. He said it. You ought to be here from now on.
We just amended.
No, that was the amendment. That was the resolution as amended.
Amended.
Right. Yes.
Roll, roll call to adopt.
We just did it.
God, these people are so confusing.
Thank you.
All right, the very last thing I want to talk about is this.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this?
Mr. Dishman, if I could just chime in very quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, so earlier when I was talking about what Ms. Powell was able to participate in remotely, I, I misspoke when I said she was unable to participate in appropriations. The law does allow her to make votes and discussions regarding appropriations. It was the budget that she was unable to participate in. And so I just want to make sure that was clear for everybody that was there.
And there, ladies and gentlemen, is why I didn't speak. That right there is why I, that's why I didn't speak. Um, because when I was in the audience, after I spoke during the deal about that, before I spoke about the fire department thing, I was in there looking up the law. I went back and I, I made sure that I was correct, that the Madison County Council had done it. As a matter of fact, I went and watched, or the Delaware County Council had done it. Yes, I went and watched. The Madison County Council had also done it a couple times, and I was like, this, this can't be. And I, I found the law that he was referencing, and I was like, that, this does not say that. And to his credit, to his, to his credit, he reached out to me and he said, I was wrong. We, we, we were, we were wrong. It was she can speak and answer questions and anything that she wants to, as far as if she wants to, on the budget. What, what she cannot do is she could not adopt, vote to adopt the budget, that that, that could not happen. Uh, she would not be able to, uh, vote to approve the budget. Like, if, if she missed the meeting on the 23rd, she would just be out. They could not do that by Zoom. And that is what they cannot do. As far as participate in discussion before that vote, it's all, it's all good. So he came out and said the right thing. I'm happy that he came out and said that. I wish Nora would have clarified and been like, oh, I was wrong. She didn't. But at that moment, I felt like, all right, Basham and I have already kissed and made up. He came back and said that he was, he was wrong, so I got nothing to speak on. Now, let's just hear this, and we'll be done.
Anyone else?
I'm trying, okay? That is not my communication.
This is insane.
Hang on just a minute, Greg.
Okay, because I, in.
I'm pretty sure that, uh, that Jerry just called him Greg and not Craig.
I've never heard of, of the department, especially Public Safety. I've never heard of a, of the department, especially Public Safety, asking to have their current appropriations reduced. Um, police and fire especially, we, we want to be really careful about defunding them. Um, their overtime line item is 93% expanded as of October the 3rd and this being removed from health insurance could be used for overtime between now and the end of the year. Um, so I would just, again, I, I, I'm not quite certain the rationale behind this. Uh, if it is not used by the end of the year, then it is surrendered to the general fund and regardless. Um, so I don't know why this is necessary and I don't know that it is, is prudent considering their overtime line item.
So let's be clear. If the, if the administration didn't bring this resolution before the council or if the council voted no on this, what happens at the end of the year is what they're wanting to happen now happens anyway. So it's, it's, it's like, it, it's stupid what they're doing. So because of this, that leads me to believe something is up because Craig doesn't fight back against what Nora says. Craig just continues to do what he does when something's wrong or when he's telling a lie. He just continues to repeat what he says over and over. Well, it's the DLGF. The DLGF said it. The DLGF. I, I heard this from the DLGF. This is the DLGF told us. This was the DLGF. DLGF. And I don't buy what he's selling.
Item is 93% expanded as of October the 3rd. Thank you.
And I, I did review that with Deputy Deacon today and he was, he was good with it. So, and this was from the DLGF.
See, he's making it seem like this is someone else's idea and not his. Nah, 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 nah. This has something to do with the fact that the city of Muncie is heading into that weird financial issue that they keep talking about and the fact that the budget's going to be so wonky come January 2025. Something is going on here and I'm gonna, this is my next little adventure. I'm gonna try to find out what we got going on here.
Anyone else from the council?
Mr. President, I have one other question. Do we need to amend this to make it, um, and that might be a question for counselor, um, our council. Um, in section one, third row, third line, it says the 21-
Bottom line, bottom line, there was a, there was a little bit of a typo. They go ahead and they vote on it and it, it like passes. Uh, let me see, how did it pass? No, it's not eight. Oh, let's see how, let's see how it votes.
Our counselor, um, our council, um, in section one, third row, third line, four, to reflect.
Yes.
Oop.
Yes.
Yes.
There's been a motion to amend in a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, so they amended it.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Now they're gonna vote.
Anyone else want to speak on this tonight? The council or the audience?
You'll need a motion to adopt as amended.
Yeah, we need a motion to adopt.
So move.
As amended.
As amended in second.
Second.
Oh, I'm not making that motion. I'm just saying we'll need a motion. It's been made in the second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
I'm really disappointed that nobody else listened to Nora there. I was hoping that some of her Democrats would have gone. I have no idea what these people are doing. I don't know why, I don't know why Sarah didn't vote no on this. I don't even think they know what they're doing at this point. I think they're just ready to leave.
Shouldn't we have done the same thing with the resolution?
No, they did it differently.
But yeah, okay, Adi Fiverr.
Good evening, council. We're at the closing arguments, I guess. And the closing arguments have gone. Anyhow, the only thing I can say is we need to support our Ask Me Local. Uh, nothing's been brought up tonight about it. Another council meeting, it's been 10, 12, 13, 18 months, something like that. We need to support these people. You guys continue to allow the mayor to spend the money he wants and gives him everything that he wants, but he will not give these people what they want. And I need you guys to be a voice. I need the council to be a voice for Ask Me and stop giving this mayor what he wants until he gets this taken care of. This is a big issue. I'm begging you. These folks are begging you. They've been here nine or 10 months or 11 or 12 months now. They quit coming because you guys are turning a closed eye to them. You're, you're turning your backs on these people. You're not getting nothing done for them. You are their elected officials to hold the administration accountable for what's going on here. If this was the police department, if this was the fire department, every last one of you guys would be stopping payment on everything, would not give this mayor anything until these contracts were ratified. Please, I'm begging you. These folks are begging you. They begged you so much. They, one person here tonight, because they aren't getting anything from you folks. Please, for their sake, if you've ever been in the union or if you've ever been part of it, you know what it's about, get these people their contract. That's all I'm asking. Put a stop to public business until they get their contract. Like I said, if it was the police or fire department, it would be different. No, it wouldn't. It's still a contract. You know, you enjoy the streets you ride on. You enjoy calling these folks in the middle of the night when you got potholes and all this stuff. Get them their contract, please. Thank you.
Christopher Bilbury.
I told him I didn't need anything.
Need a, a motion for-
All right, they adjourned. That's it. That's that. That's the meeting and, uh, it was a, it was a cluster, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I just don't understand. So that's that. Uh, it was brought to my attention last night after last night's show that I did not go over the Muncie Fire Department cheating scandal issue with you. I will do that on Wednesday. For those of you that want to see a little bit about it, I'm going to be making a post about it, uh, either later tonight or first thing tomorrow. I'm going to be going through and sharing the, both of the orders and we're going to talk about that. So I want to bring that up to GW for bringing that to my attention last night, that I did not cover that. So we will cover that, not, excuse me, not tomorrow, on Wednesday. Tomorrow night, we will have another long, long evening. We're gonna have a 6:00 PM Madison County, Madison County Council meeting. I'm telling you folks, for those of you that do not watch the meetings, tomorrow night, we will be live, live streaming the, um, Madison County Council meeting. Watch it because it's gonna be fireworks. Um, you guys watch that and then Catherine and I will be live as soon as the meeting is over. I'm hoping that it will be over, A, soon enough for me to get home by nine. We'll have to see. Just watch in the meeting. We'll give you clues. I'll let you know. We'll, we'll post. Number two, uh, that I'm not arrested. Uh, time will tell. We'll see. One way or another, we will go live tomorrow after the meeting. So just watch out for it, but it will be there. You guys, take care. Have a wonderful, wonderful evening and we will see you all, uh, back here tomorrow night, uh, first at 6:00 PM for the Madison County livestream and then we'll be here at nine or after for episode 303. You guys have a wonderful, 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 wonderful Tuesday and, uh, we will see you back here tomorrow evening. Take care. God bless and, uh, let me make sure we've got everything. Is that ready to go? Uh, take care. God bless and, uh, good. Bye. Hit the like on your way out. Bye.